We're substituting item four C resolution only for resolution granting conditional use approval for thirty-eight detached, single-family units. And to the routine, we're adding a docket in the amount of ninety-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Need a motion to subject the agenda as amended, moved by Ms. Lawrence, seconded by Ms. Newman. Any questions? All in favor? Seven zero, motion carried. Presentation of agenda, Mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief, but we have some partners here, some pet partners, and I would like to invite them up so we could present a proclamation.
What a group.
All right, Tina, we ready? Get over here. Okay, we're ready now, right?
Ready now.
Proclamation from the city of Biloxi, whereas Pet Partners has designated April thirtieth as National Therapy Animal Day. Whereas Pet Partners Therapy Animal Teams in Biloxi play an essential role in improving human health and well-being throughout, through human-animal bond. Pet Partners Therapy Animal Teams make millions of visits per year to hospitals, nursing homes, schools, hospice, and interact with a variety of people such as veterans, senior citizens, patients, students facing literacy challenges, and those approaching the end of life. Whereas these exceptional therapy animals who partner with human companions bring comfort and healing to those who need, those in need. Therefore, I, Andrew Fofo Gillich, Mayor of Biloxi, do hereby proclaim the thirtieth day of April twenty-twenty-three as National Therapy Animal Day. So we thank you.
He'll talk. He's excited.
If anybody would like to do this, we need more people. This pet therapy has exploded, and we don't have enough teams. If anybody's interested in doing this, it's a very, very rewarding experience.
Great, thank you. We can do a little photo op?
Mayor, could, Mayor, could we get a picture of the dog biting you on the leg?
It's early, it's early. He's got the right idea? Okay, thank y'all, appreciate it, Tina, bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We don't see any departmental reports. We're gonna start with the council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I need a Diopin Houdrebean. That's a chemical name for Benadryl. I'm allergic to dogs. But it's all right, we made it. First thing, we welcome the Thunderbirds coming in this weekend. Should be a great ass show for the city of Biloxi. That's always a good event. It's always got a couple of great days. I think the weather's supposed to hold out and be pretty good, but that's, that's a, should be a good thing for the city of Biloxi. The next thing, we had a lot of talking about the last event we had that didn't turn out too well, and we supposed to have plans from Florida. We supposed to have plans from Atlanta. Y'all gonna bring those plans to us so we can look at and vote this stuff in?
You asking me that? Well, they're in review. They're, Chief, I think they're in our attorney's hands at this point in time, so you wanna give us a little update?
Have this before you shortly.
Yeah, we need, we need to look at that pretty quick. We need to put something in place, you know, so we have to have all of it ready. You know, I know Florida had roadblocks, had all kind of things that, looked at all the cars as they come in town. There's a lot of things that we can do to protect the citizens. So those things need to be put in place pretty quick.
Yes, sir. We'll have it for you shortly.
Right.
And let me add, we're, we're planning on making some actually onsite visits to Miami and Panama City.
So just as soon as you can, 'cause we need to look at that. If we have to have a workshop, then we need to do that also.
Yes, sir.
Not a problem. It's something we have to do. You can't bring that many problems into the city. Something that we gotta look at, take care of.
Let me just add too, what we also need to look at as well is some of the permitting and some things that fall under the LDO, just someone renting their property for the weekend. And so some of those things need to be looked at and layered on top of this. And some of those are in the LDO that are gonna have to go through tax changes, I believe, and go through the planning commission as well. But, but that needs to be a part of it, not just ordinances on events.
No, that, that's also, that's a good thing to do. But I mean, when the chief said last time we had the meeting, he said, "A lot of people came down to Biloxi to help him, so they're not coming back." That's not a good thing.
No.
That's when you create a lot of problems with people here. Not saying all of them bad, anything like that, but you have to be able to control the citizens and take care of all these problems that we have. Those are important things for the city of Biloxi. We are a tourist town. We welcome people. But then you need to come in, obey the laws also. So that's the key.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Ms. Newman?
Yes, we'll be having a Ward Three City Council meeting at Donald Snyder at five-thirty tonight. Again, a Ward Three meeting at Donald Snyder at five-thirty tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. Deming?
Chief, Mr. Mayor, I received an email from, it says Mississippi Black Spring Rate twenty-twenty-four. Did you receive this email? And it appears, are they organizing this? Is this a, is this an individual that can communicate and work with the city on making sure that events happen?
We're, we're looking at that now. I'm sure that was sent out intentionally right now, you know, for multiple reasons. But it has the dates of spring break next year and, yeah.
Okay, I just didn't know if it had a contact component that I didn't see where you guys could work with this, this group, if it is gonna try to organize like Cruisin' the Coast or, or any of the other events that happen here and, and run a lot more smoothly than, than the spring break event.
Right.
That's it?
Is this all my council report?
Yes. Your show.
Thank you. Ms. Bell, can you give me an update on where we're at with the parks on Pops Ferry? With the parks, the lighting, opening, reopening the parks for activities?
Park. We still haven't gotten the plans back from.
I know we, we sent them off to a new firm, right to Michelle Batano?
Yep. I have not heard anything back yet.
Okay, is there any, is there any deadlines or tentative dates I give to the residents of the ward?
I don't think.
We just.
We have to find the funding?
This is lights, yeah, we got the funding.
This is Pops Ferry, yes.
Okay, so we're just.
Christie, and I'll see what the deadline is.
Okay, just, I'd love, just be able to tell them something.
Absolutely.
And is, is Ms. Labata here today?
I, I don't see her.
I'll reach out to her by email. Thank you, Ms. Bell. That's all I have.
That's it? Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Deming. Dr. Tisdale?
Yes, several things. Tree Committee has vacancies in Ward Three and Ward Seven.
I think we submitted one name for Ward Three.
It just didn't make this agenda.
So Ward Three is on the way, and then we're still looking for somebody in Ward Seven though, right? Okay. Good, appreciate that. Next, next question. Sorry. Traffic signal at Irish Hill and White Avenue, I think now that the main gate is open on Division, do we, can we do something at that intersection to, so we don't have traffic stopping there at red lights when there's no traffic coming the other way?
Yeah, primarily it was supposed to be east-west traffic and, and only interrupted, and I think Lammy was working on the signalization where unless you, unless you're coming from White Avenue going, you know, north, it'll stay green mostly east, east to west till you interrupt that cycle, so you.
So that's in the works?
Yeah.
It's already been tweaked, it's already been tweaked, so it's majority east-west and only occasionally goes to north-south so that you can make a left-hand turn. Gotta, gotta have a turn and arrow to make a left-hand turn.
Right, okay, so we're working on that, thank you. Water fountain at Pennzoil Park, I'm not letting go of it. Been working on this for two years. Cost about, I figure, six or seven thousand. We could get it done. Excuse me. Also, I'd like to request that we adjourn today in memory of former Councilman Bill Flutie. Go ahead, let me.
Okay, okay, Dr. Tisdale gonna take a break. Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know the events from a couple of weekends ago are still in everyone's mind. I do want to thank the mayor for coming and addressing the Mississippi Hotel and Lodging Association, along with other leaders, Matt McDonald, Beverly Martin, Linda Hornsby. I think it was a, a good, honest, and a direct conversation that we had, and I really appreciate that, Mayor. I've also been in touch with Dan Rowe. Dan Rowe's the Executive Director of the Panama City Tourism Commission. He shared some information, and I'm sure y'all will probably be getting some information from his office, but he'd like to offer any assistance as he possibly could. John Deegan is their Beach Police Officer as well for the Beach Police, and he had some good insight as well. I, I'd also like to express my concern for the entire community. I know this issue that we're discussing is frustrating for a lot of people that wanna celebrate, you know, get together and celebrate and everything, and, and I know we do invite everyone to come and visit our beautiful city, but like these other venues, we do need to take a good look at it. We do wanna be, make sure that we send the right message, that we have an inclusive community, and the council sits up here ready to work with you, Mayor, to get all the facts so we can make, make the right decisions going forward. And that's, that's all I'll say on that, that topic. I'd like to congratulate the Biloxi High baseball team and coach, first-year coach, Horton Buchanan, for winning the district for Biloxi High. They now move on to the playoffs, and we, we certainly wish them well. I do have a few issues in my ward. One is on the agenda today for some continued code violations. We have extended a couple of extensions to one of the property owners, but not much progress has been made. So I would ask that y'all support code enforcement, community development, moving forward to rectify those code enforcement violations. Let's see, the tennis courts, the lighting out there, and I know as we move to, I know it may not be part of the scope of work, but perhaps in this next fiscal year, we can get some quotes on some, some lighting, the LED lighting, it looks like the, is the way to go. The lighting out at the tennis courts are kinda outdated. They're the real, what, high sodium or whatever, whatever the kind of lighting they are, and it, it really blinds you when you're out there trying to play tennis and toss the ball up in air. You're looking at these lights that really are not equipped for a tennis court. So I would ask the administration to possibly add that for review, to take a look at it. And then finally, Community Development Director, I'd like to charge you with, with looking at that area along Old Highway sixty-seven. Some of those parcels out there may be time to look at it for a proper zoning recommendation. So, Mr. Creo, is that okay if I put that in your lap, and y'all take a look at it when you can? Thank you, Director. And that, with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and then I'll come back to Dr. Tisdale. You have none? Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, I apologize for that. You know, that water fountain at Pennzoil Park just got stuck right here. But I wanted, I wanted to finish my comment. Former Councilman Bill Flutie passed away probably three weeks or a month ago, and was buried out at the National Cemetery this past week, so if we could adjourn in memory of Mr. Flutie. I think he served two terms, George.
Do.
Anyway, he, he was a good fellow. And finally, the last thing is, after this council meeting, I need to meet with Mr. Glavine and Mr. Lawrence on the insurance committee and Mr. Leonard, probably for forty-five minutes, thirty minutes, sixty minutes, somewhere in there, just to talk about employee insurance kind of midway through the year. That concludes my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tisdale, and I have none today. We're gonna move on to number three, our public agenda, citizen comments. We allotted a total of forty-five minutes, three minutes per person strictly enforced. I'm gonna ask anyone who come up, please come on up and sign the roster before you start speaking. Anyone to my left, anyone to my left, please come on up. Mr. Bones, Mr. Marks?
Hello, how we doing today? I didn't know it was Dog Day. I'd have bought my dog, but I asked her a question this morning. I said, "Would you rather be George Lawrence or be dead?" She rolled over and died. She couldn't make it, I'm sorry. But anyway, I love you, George. As been a member of the Biloxi Businessmen Club since nineteen ninety, we have taken a number of positions in the community. And one of the things that's really, the club was talking about, and we came up with the idea to have a fundraiser for the police and the fire department. It's just mighty, mighty sad that when somebody gets hurt or gets killed and their loved ones left behind, really don't have a direction or gotta regroup, and they got a lot of bills, and they might have children in college. And so we are taking a position, and I didn't know that Chief Miller was doing a fundraiser also, and so we hooked up together. And so the fundraiser's gonna be this, May seventh at Ground Zero. We got seven bands. Fofo's gonna be playing also. Did you know that, Fofo? And so we got about thirty booths, and we got a lot of politicians that's gonna have booths also. And Ground Zero has done an outstanding job helping us with this project. Chief Miller and Nick, Chief Geiser, the police, the fire department has helped tremendously. And so we just wanna let y'all know this fundraiser's gonna be May seventh at Ground Zero. And if you know anybody who wants to be a sponsor or participate, we still have time. And I've also got some flyers here that shows it's all tax write-off, so you get to write everything off. And so I appreciate if y'all would show up. And just one more thing I'd like to bring up is, I go to the Shucker Games, and I really think they need to extend the net further past third base and past first base. I watch these foul balls hit into the stands, and they just, it's, it's, somebody's gonna get really hurt bad. And, and Major League Baseball has made it. You've got to extend it. Then every Major League Baseball team's stadium has got it. And in fact, I almost got hit twice. Good thing I wasn't looking at my phone. And, but it's just something to, to consider, 'cause you got a lot of kids there, and people looking at their phones and don't look up, and the foul ball comes. So having said that, I thank you. Y'all are great council, got a great mayor, and I salute you and God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Marks. Anyone else on my left?
Father Greg Baram, priest of the diocese of Biloxi, and here to talk about a building that was donated to Loews and Fishers to continue to serve the hungry in the city of Biloxi. It's on Judge Sequel Avenue. As you know, we've been feeding the hungry for forty years in the city of Biloxi, and we want to continue in partnership with the city to serve this group of people. We know if we feed them, they are calm, and they are treated with dignity and respect. If we do not feed them, then trouble occurs 'cause they're desperate and hopeless. There are a lot of people with me today too in support. If y'all could stand up, who's in support of us? And, thank you. And would like to invite them to come up and to share different aspects of the good that will be for the community and also in, in, in that area. So I thank you. I really hope that you consider the good for the future of serving the, the hungry here in Biloxi. And the hungry you all are just not those who don't have a house. We feed anybody who comes. We have a lot of people who come out of their homes. They can't afford rent and medical and food. So sometimes they'll pay that, and then they'll come to us to get, to get fed. So thank you, appreciate your time and your, your listening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Put my hands in my pocket. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name's Al Gumbos, one-four-one St. Charles Avenue. Been involved with Loews and Fishers for quite some time. Couple of things I wanted to point out is, I truly believe that the character of a community or city is demonstrated by how they take care of the young, the elderly, and the indigent. Loews and Fishers has done that for more than forty years. Don't know of any other government support other than the different food programs. There's no local sponsorship as far as the different civil organizations or what have you. They have periodic fundraisers, such as a special pingo or what have you. But I truly believe that the character of this community is demonstrated by how we treat our young, our elderly, and our indigent. As Father said many times, our program would have Martha's Meals, so people that couldn't get out, meals are delivered to them. It's been a seventy and eighty per meal. Serve two meals a day, and right now, Father Nim has been working out of the back of a truck. So you can only imagine what a building with the proper facilities, and that's what we've had for many, many years, until recently. But the neighborhood, I think, would benefit. When you look at people in somewhat of a compromised financial situation, a free meal once or twice a day would help a great deal. In many cases, it's just too much month at the end of the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left? Anyone else on my left?
My name is Buck O'J. I've been in Biloxi since nineteen sixty-nine, had several businesses, and retired now. Loews and Fishers has, has always been a, a passion for me since I come from a rather large family. I'm talking about twenty-two. And I had, of course, a mother that either always ate last or didn't eat it all for fear of not having enough food for her children. So that's something that, that's very dear to my heart. I can't, I imagine a mother sitting back watching her hungry children go to sleep at night. And so just a little bit of history about Loews and Fishers. We started at Nativity, had three churches involved in it, and we decided we needed some kind of social system that would address the, the hungry people and the transit people, and we came up with this feeding program. And we, we started at the Sister Barbara Cafeteria at Nativity. We left there and went to Main Street, and Hurricane Katrina ran us out to, what are awesome words? Water Street, the Episcopal Church there, since it was washed away by Katrina. But anyway, we, we certainly don't want to burden the city with any of, of our problems, or don't intend to. Our job is to feed the hungry. We don't clothe them, we don't counsel them, we don't, we don't have any kind of programs to draw them to this location that we have now, that's been so generously donated to us. We don't, we're not planning on instituting anything that's gonna add more traffic to the area. So we, we just want the city to know that we're not in here, we're not in here to upset the applecart, we just wanna feed the hungry. And I, I, I think, I think that we can do a good job of it, and have done a good job of it. We're awfully appreciative of the city, considering.
Thank you, sir. That concludes your time.
And we thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for supporting us. We know that you do. And thank all of you all for your, for your help.
Oh, he didn't sign it.
Thank you for the opportunity, and I'll be brief because there's a lot of people, and I don't wanna be repetitious on everything you've already heard. But I live in Deabeville. However, I was born and raised on the Point, and we just celebrated our sixtieth class reunion from Biloxi High this past weekend and had a great time. But I'm here today to support Father Greg and Loews and Fishers for the job they do for a lot of indigent people. And a lot of these meals that they get might be the only meal that they get that day. And we want to continue doing that as, as long as we possibly can, and we've been blessed with a donation of a building. And I know that there's some concern about safety issues, but over in Deabeville, we have the Kenny Founier Building that do an inclement weather. We, we bring in a lot of folks, some from Biloxi, and we feed them, and we keep them sometimes up to three or four days, and this goes on the entire winter. So we know your concerns, but the only thing that separates the Founier Building and Forest Cove is the ditch, and we've had no problems over the years. And so we hope that we continue that, and we're gonna do everything in our, in our power to make sure that they're safe and feed as many people as we can, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Anyone else?
Hey, I'll, I'll try to be brief as well. My name is Grant Curtis Bell. I currently serve as the Board Treasurer. I just wanted to come up and say a little bit about my experience with Loews and Fishers and how its kind of impacted my life. Been volunteering since twenty seventeen, and during that time, I've just had just this amazing opportunity to learn from the people that people that we serve and the other volunteers that have come from all over the country, really. We have, you know, seasonal guests from other churches and other neighborhoods that have came and traveled specifically to serve at Loews and Fishes and to be a part of our community and to impact and change the lives of those that we feed. And it's just been a nourishing experience for me, for the young children that volunteer, for the youth, for the elderly. Everyone involved has just been changed in some way and through something so simple as just giving food and sharing that love. It would just be sad to kind of see that dissipate and disappear for we don't have a place to serve and to be a beacon, a home that's safe for us to serve and for our patrons to come and eat and just have a warm meal. So I just ask for your continued support and consideration as we kind of move forward and try to find a permanent home. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left? Anyone on my left? Going to go anyone on my right?
Good afternoon. Those of us that are opposed chose to stand by and let this wonderful organization speak first because we do believe what they do is a very good thing. I myself have donated time, money, food, whatever we can do to help them. But the problem is with this location is it's already just so heavily populated. I don't know if any of y'all been down Judge Sequel lately, but I challenge you before, if you haven't, think about this first. There are businesses down there that are doing pretty good. There are barber shops, restaurants, laundromats, alteration shops, a pawn shop. And I think the mayor has a building down there as well in that area. At the Planning Commission, there was a lot of people showed up against. And they presented themselves well. The concern is those that do have businesses at the front door, back door, side door, and homes that this is sitting in their backyard are concerned with the same situation that happened over on Water Street where you have a lot of people hanging out in between meals, before meals overnight. Don't think for a moment that if by any chance the city is thinking that this is a good thing going down there, it's going to help you because there's only two ways down there, Howard and Division. You can't cut through the neighborhoods. I have a proposal. Let them go in there. There was a gentleman that owns all the apartment complexes, offered them $10,000 to go towards a food truck. The people that are living in homes over here on the east side, northern part of the side over here, can't always get there. Let the food trucks go into the community. Let them prepare the food in that building and take it out in the community where it needs be so we're not dragging all of our problems back and forth constantly across the city. You all know how bad the homeless situation is. I decided a couple of weeks ago down and get a hamburger down here at the McDonald's behind me and was really surprised how often I was bothered just trying to get through there by people just simply wanting money. Not a bad thing, not a bad thing at all. Today, in the Herald newspaper, one of the little headlines, Biloxi looking to secure businesses on Division Street. By allowing this to go in that area, I don't know that you're protecting the right of the business owners that are there to have these businesses open, not to be harassed and not bothered. They're putting money into the city coffers through sales tax. And we have to decide today how we're going to build out Division, how we're going to build out Western into town here that is, I think, doing pretty good. You've opened a wonderful business there. You've been an asset to our community. And thank you, Ms. Newman. I just challenge you all today, they're not going to go without a meal if this location doesn't happen. It's still going to happen, maybe in a better spot. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else on the right? Ma'am?
I hope I can do this. This is an emotional topic for me. I 100% support Loews and Fishes. In fact, when my mother passed two years ago, we asked that donations be made to Loews and Fishes in lieu of flowers. However, nineteen years ago, my mother was attacked, beaten up, her teeth were knocked out, and she was raped on Porter Avenue where I still live. And it was by a homeless person looking for drug money. And so this is very personal for me. Loews and Fishes is a wonderful organization. We gave to it. But it doesn't have to be in a neighborhood that's already inundated with homeless people. I have to get up every day and clean my yard because of the trash in the yard. Fine, not a problem, I can do that. But when people are sitting on my front porch and I come out of my house at night, that's frightening for me. I'm a single woman and I want to live in a safe neighborhood. My family has lived in this neighborhood on Porter Avenue since the 1940s. And I want to stay there. I retired and came back to Biloxi from Georgia Tech seven years ago because I love the city. But I want to feel safe in my city. So I've had to expend, I've spent several thousand dollars to put a privacy fence around my yard. And I left three trees, orchard trees on the outside for the homeless, but I kept two trees behind the fence for myself. I still want to support the homeless and make sure that they're fed. I'm a liberal, I admit it. But I also want to feel safe in my home. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right? Sir?
Good afternoon. My name's Webster Oberth. I live at 1194 Judge Sequel Avenue. My family's been in Biloxi since 1964. My two parents are buried at the VA. I was just, maybe I missed something at the zoning meeting. Were there any surrounding property owners in favor of this proposal? I read the Biloxi Police Department report. The most current one I could get was nineteen twenty, I'm sorry, 2020. Twenty-seven percent of arrests were attributed to homeless that year with over 1,200 calls and over 350 panhandling calls. I was personally broke into, burglarized twice. Suddenly, the homeless that had been walking by my house and keeping an eye on me all this time quit walking by. That's a hard feeling. Homeless sex offenders, I just decided to pull up the information. There's over twenty that list homeless outright in a vague location or just giving a vague street address without the actual street address number-wise, which they're required to do. Property values. New York City did a study. They found a seven to fourteen percent decrease in nearby properties when there's homeless services in there. San Francisco's trying to house homeless in hotels. Sounds like a wonderful idea. At least 186 people died by drug overdose in 1920 and 21 in those rooms. I don't think they're going to get many hotels to take them after that. Obvious question, hate to be blunt, where will the homeless use the bathroom after they eat? I wouldn't know. If it is approved, despite my objections, can the gates to the cemetery be put, can gates be put up and locked to prevent the homeless from going into the cemetery to use those as restrooms? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the right?
Hello, my name's Eugene Lacaz, 214 Porter Avenue. My neighborhood is mostly a working-class neighborhood. A lot of my neighbors couldn't be here today because they have to go to work. I've now missed two days of work in regards to this issue. I wanted, could I have those in opposition to this stand up as well? I'd also like to point out that the people stood up in opposition actually live in the area. Excuse me. This was approved by the zoning commission. I feel like that had to be an error because in the zoning paperwork, it says as a part of the conditional use application, the Planning Commission must determine that as proposed, it will provide the public interest at this location and is compatible with the neighborhood and avoids adverse effects on the neighbors and protects property values in the neighborhood. It fails to do any of that. Their proposed security precautions should be a telltale for what should be expected by the neighborhood. I also feel as though the proposed conditional use won't be able to be legitimately enforced. I'm never going to be able to approve that an incident that happened at my house came from an establishment a block away. I want you to picture the proposed entity as at this location. And I want to picture you living in that neighborhood, you living in one of those apartments, your spouse, your children, your grandparents. The location is completely inappropriate. This is a neighborhood. We're trying to have a safe neighborhood. It is so close to the downtown area that you're trying to invitalize and close to the flagship road of Biloxi, Porter Avenue. This, I mean, tourism is a major factor in the area and people are going to come to downtown Biloxi and just see the pedestrian traffic of the homeless and be, anyway. In my limited time remaining, my neighborhood, how it affects me, they're going to go there, they're going to walk back to the Shell. I live across from the Shell. They're going to sit loiter, panhandle, watch me as I come and go, see when I'm not home, see when my neighbors aren't home. It's as dangerous. Please don't approve this.
Thank you, sir. Back of the room? Yes, ma'am, come on.
Okay, and gosh, here I am again, trying to plead my case before y'all for our neighborhood. I too am against the location. We already have two. I would like to, you know, ask, and I'm, well, a lot of respect for them for doing what they're doing. I am not against Loews and Fishes. I've worked at it. I've donated to them. I'd like to see the number, if they've got the statistics, on the people that they do, these hungry children, and I'm not saying they're not, adults, and the names of them, who they deliver out to. They do this three days a week. I think that's what bothers me. They do it three days a week. And like I pled at the Planning Commission, you know, people eat seven days a week. They don't eat three days a week. They don't need a little bag to go home and at the end of the night. If you're going to do this, and I don't know what preconceived judgments you have or what you want to have done or what in your mind you've already planned to vote on, I don't know that. I don't know y'all. But I would ask that you would take into consideration that this is not the place for it. We already have two of them. We have a homeless problem. Everybody knows it. Everybody sees it. I have pictures of a guy laying on Porter Avenue with five or six policemen around him. He's so zoned out and drugged out, they can't even get him up the other day. I mean, this goes on continually around our neighborhoods. They get on our porches and they will plead with you that it's not just the homeless. They want to feed everybody. Well, I have a friend who's dying of cancer right down here off Howard Avenue. She's never had a meal taken to her. I'm the one who takes her meals, applesauce, anything that she needs. I have become her caregiver because I am so, I would love for them to come feed her. They've got two places already. So I would plead before y'all to, I just feel like when we went down there and pled our case before the Planning Commission and they kind of, did kind of put it off on this group. When it was over with, there was no one that attacked anyone. In fact, the ones who were against it were kind of laughed at and mocked when we left the building. It was kind of, I'm going to tell you right now, I have had a lot of soul searching done on this. I went home and I told my husband, you know, I want to feed the homeless. I'm not like that. I want to do the Lord's work. This is right, but we already have two places. Let's feed these people and get a truck, a refrigerator. Heck, I've got a refrigerated truck down there right now at the shop that works just fine. Get these meals and take them out to these people. If you're going to talk the talk, then walk the walk, please, all of you. They're all good people. I know they want to do what's right, just like we all want to do the Lord's work. But let's get it out where they get these meals seven days a week. Let's make them work for the things that they want to bring for them. That's what I'm asking. If you're going to insist on opening this place, get a curb on the homelessness. They are intruding and infiltrating our neighborhoods. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else? Mr. Griffin in the back? The one.
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Griffin. I'm with the Knights of Peter Claver here in Biloxi. My organization's a faith-based organization and we do, we're a small group, but we try to do big things. We've been at Our Mother's Sorrows on Division Street since 1919. We work with Loews and Fishes. They're a great organization. They do some things that a lot of us should be doing. And there's no buts in it. I think, I think they need to have this building. Our organization has been serving meals. Sometimes twice a year, we feed 150 people. And I know fifty or so are delivered. They actually deliver to the homes for the people that can't come out. We're supposed to be Christians and we talk about feeding the people. But when it comes to a place to do that, there's always that but. In East Biloxi, down on Main Street, at Water Street, we supported them there. We've had two, we still have two in our neighborhood, two places that feed the hungry. But to associate hunger with crime, that's ridiculous. Yeah, homeless has a lot of issues there, mental illness. And you're right, you eat seven days a week, or at least you try to. Everybody don't eat seven days a week. So I think what Loews and Fishes are doing is outstanding. I've been out there this past year, we served over 150 meals out of a mobile kitchen down at Back Bay Mission and ate outside on picnic tables. And that's where they've been since they lost their place on Water Street. So I think if we're really serious about calling ourselves Christians and we support them and we need them and they're a great organization, don't put that but in there. Put an "and" in there. And I like support where they are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Gentlemen in the back?
My name's Chris Ball. I emailed you about the concerns I have. You heard it from the horse's mouth. This lady's relative was raped by a homeless person. I'm concerned about the liability of myself. I own 200 units right there, over 200, it's 255 units. I have 200-plus tenants I got to protect, right? Are each and every one of you going to look at them six months down the road when a homeless person murders them and their family comes in here and asks you, why? Why did you allow this to come to my neighborhood? That's all I got to say. Y'all got any questions for me? Bet that sink in.
Thank you, sir.
I do have a question. How many units are you speaking of, sir?
255.
And are those market rates units?
Yes.
They're all market rates?
Only six, Section 8, yes. We got, you know, new lighting, new cabinets, new flooring. I invite you to come out. I'll give you a tour. I bought them in October.
Right, I've been through the neighborhood. I'm familiar with the history.
Call me, you got my number. We'll meet over there. Let's look at it.
Thank you.
Anytime next week. Anytime next week.
We, we can hit that on, uh, when that subject comes up. So this is citizen comments strictly for citizens. Thank you. You finish? Anyone else? Did I miss anyone?
Good afternoon. How are you all doing? I'm Lester Batiste. Uh, I grew up right there in the point. I have a shack right there, probably about 300 yards from those businesses that they're speaking of. I thank Loews and Fisherman. I, I support it, but I don't support the area that they're trying to present. I coached in the city leagues here of Biloxi for years as a college graduate from Wiley College. That's a college out in East Texas. Carried some teams. The, to, as far as St. Petersburg, Florida. I support all of you. I probably coached some of your kid, children in the city leagues. But my home, again, is, is right there, probably 300 yards from Judge Sequel at 229 Bailey in Biloxi. And I just don't think the location would be a good one. And I'm asking you all, I know most of those people are not from that area. Like I said, my home is a shack. I probably, I'm retired now, so I'm, I'm looking to improve it. And I just don't think it's a safe neighborhood. And thank you all, and I appreciate it.
Go Wildcats.
Thank you, Mr. Batiste. Yeah. Yeah, this is citi- citizen comments, please, sir. Is there anyone else? Anyone else? That being said, citizen comments are now closed. We're going to move on to the policy agenda. Uh, first reading ordinance A. Carrie?
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance related to cannabis.
I'll move it.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. That is our first reading, first reading. Ordinance B, Carrie?
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning for two parcels of land from neighborhood business to community business for 2694 Beach Boulevard.
Need a motion on that?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Tisdale. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. That also is the first reading. Going to move on to four, foresee in our resolutions.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize construction of the 38 detached single-family units for 1654 Beach Boulevard.
I'll move it.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second it.
Second by Dr. Tisdale. Any comments, Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, I'd like to table this. We have a, uh, ordinance on the table on the same piece of property. And I talked to Peter and what we're going to do is table it for one week. Put the ordinance, the old one on, rescind it, and then we'll put this one there to pass. So we have to get rid of the old one first.
It's been moved by Mr. Lawrence for tabling it. Need a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Dr. Tisdale. Any comments? Dr. Tisdale?
Uh, this, this, I believe Mr. Lawrence said it would be tabled till the next council meeting, which is Tuesday, May 2nd at, or May 6th.
What we doing, right?
Yeah, at 6:00 PM, yeah.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any questions by any other council member? Call for a question, all in favor? Seven zero, motion carries. Resolution C is tabled. Um, resolution D, Carrie?
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize a social services agency to be located at 1157 Judge Sequel Avenue.
Need a motion on that? Moved by Mr. Lawrence. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Kenny Glavine, Mr. Lawrence.
I'd also like to table this. There's a lot of concern from both sides. I think we need to sit down with them, which I'll be willing to do. I'll sit down with Father Barah and anybody else to set this thing up. But I just needed way more information and way more, we got to take care of both sides. The neighborhood and the business itself for feeding the hunger. So I'm just asking for y'all's support for me to find out all the information I can. And so I'd like to move, it's, uh, subjects call.
It's been moved properly by Mr. Lawrence. I need a second? Second by Ms. Newman, uh, for tabling it. Any questions? Questions, Mr. Lawrence, Ms. Newman? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Newman. Ms. Newman got the floor?
I'd like to hear what you have to say, Father.
Father?
Do we get all the information from you? We just put a subject call so you can call it back.
Anytime.
No, no. I call you to call the, the motion back on the table.
Pull it back up anytime, yes.
Any councilman could bring it up at any time.
Any councilman.
So, so we're not looking at a definite, I mean, not to table it for three weeks or four weeks if we need it more information. I mean, I think we ought to vote on it one way or another for the folks who are interested in whether this moves forward or not. So I, I'd hope that we'd have a date on the agenda, scheduled on the agenda, when we'd...
Well, I'm starting immediately dealing with them, so I mean, I can't say I can do it in a week or two, but I'm going to start as soon as I can. I'll deal with Father, I'll deal with the residents. I'll do that as fast as I can. So I can't say I can do it in two or three weeks and come back and table it again. I'm going to try to get all the information and bring that back to y'all.
Could we table it for a month?
30 days.
Well, to the, the last, the last meeting in May, that'd give, I think that'd give everybody adequate time to, they want to go look near the area, talk with folks.
That makes you feel better, that's fine.
I need all the feeling better I can, almost choked to death earlier, so, yeah. No, if, we could table it till the, what?
30th, the last meeting of the month.
May 23rd? Okay, table it to May 23rd. All right, okay.
Okay. Dr. Tisdale, any more comments?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Glavine? Mr. Barrett?
When I have something in my ward, I like to have the respect of others if I ask for something to be tabled. So I'll support it because it's in your ward, George.
I agree. Mr. Deming, any questions?
No, I, I just, we'll follow the leadership of, of Mr. Barrett. Respect George's wishes, give him 30 days to pick out the information he wants.
Okay, Ms. Newman? Okay. I'm going to call for the question on table in it for 30 days, all in favor? Okay, seven zero, motion carry, 30 days. I need a motion on the consent agenda? Moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
Do you want to, uh, Mike, N?
Say that again?
N.
N, Nancy.
As in November?
Like November. Marine, Marine taught November. What, what is this?
Again, 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 are we both talking about five November? N? Which, which, which?
The missing up coast, the worksite program guideline?
Okay, that's, that's a, that's an intern free to the city to work in the IT department. An intern from the college.
How, one?
One. Free to the city.
Okay. Have we done that before?
Uh, we, we did in the police department. We had a similar program where an older, uh, lady worked for us for about a year, again, on a program that was paid for by the college.
Okay, just, just trying, just trying to...
It's a really, it's, it's really, besides being a good deal for us, it's a chance for a young person to get some experience on their resume before they graduate school.
That's a good thing. Just want to make sure that, you know, just one person more, that's all. Anytime you work for the, with the Gulf Coast College, I mean, that's, that's a good thing for them and us, for our program. I think that's, uh, pretty much everything. I already told you, just regular contracts and that.
Okay, Ms. Newman? Mr. Deming?
Uh, just one thing, the, um, I think it's A. This is the, the baseball, um, consent, is this the consent of the purchase of the baseball team?
You want to take that, Peter?
Yeah, that's the, uh, consent to the assignment transfer that was tabled, uh, for 30 days.
Right, I was actually, I don't know if you saw, there was a, a federal lawsuit filed. Um, I think there was an attempt to enjoy in this sale. I, I don't, I would love to see a better owner own the team. However, as a lawyer, if I'm doing, say, an estate matter and I find a color of title, an issue that, that, um, can cause a problem with the, the sale of the transfer of the property, I abstain from, from that transaction until that, that can be cleared. Um, I don't know that when, when, uh, our council says that it's a misnomer that we consent or not consent, I think that, that when I read the Major League Baseball's position, they were approving the sale on the condition of Biloxi acknowledging the transfer. So I think it's very specific that the city of Biloxi consent to the sale of the team. With this federal lawsuit filed, I don't know what position it puts us in. There aren't any advantages to this contract other than the new owner saying he's going to do the things that Ken didn't do. But there's really, we never leveraged or, or negotiated for better terms. Just a new owner saying he's going to do the same thing the last one did. I am against supporting this at the time because this federal lawsuit is filed. Um, I've received information from other attorneys in different groups and I am not comfortable putting my name on something that has color of title, so to speak. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Tisdale?
I have nothing.
Okay, Mr. Glavine?
No comment.
Mr. Barrett?
Question, could I ask for a legal question?
Great.
What, uh, what the demo was talking about, how's that affect what we doing? If there is a lawsuit against it, the lawsuit's against who? The team itself, the suckers, the city? Who, who's the lawsuit against?
Uh, I think Mr. Bennett has filed a lawsuit against Mr. Young. City is not part of that lawsuit. And the new owner is not a part of the lawsuit that I can tell.
Well, does any changes y'all made inside of this, the contract, that we need to know about? Any adjustments, anything y'all done different? I mean, are we passing the same contract that was before or are we not?
Yeah, the, the only additions we made were to mirror the agreement that Mr. Bennett made with Mr. Young three years ago.
And that stuff that we did, is that affecting him in the lawsuit, affecting us in the lawsuit? Or does that put us into the lawsuit?
It doesn't put us in the lawsuit. I'm not going to speak to what his attorney may or may not done. You know, I don't, we're not a part of the lawsuit.
No, we gave, we gave him the 30 days.
We've been asked to consent and review and, you know, that's what this is for. And we gave him 30 days.
Yep. And we stuck our word, we did it.
Thank you.
I just have one, one question for Peter. Who is Biloxi Baseball? Is that us?
That's Ken Young.
That's Ken Young. So it, so the lawsuit is against Kim Young and his company.
It appears to be, yes.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call for the question on the consent agenda, all in favor? I'll take the dissents afterwards, all in favor? Seven zero, any against, George?
No.
I have none. Ms. Newman? Mr. Deming? Mr. Deming is against 5A. Dr. Tisdale?
Nothing.
None? Mr. Glavine?
I have no exceptions.
No, no exceptions. And Mr. Barrett, none? Okay. Consent agenda passed. Code enforcement, Mr. Creel?
The first case on the agenda today, item A, Marion D. Hill, 214 Elmer Street. This property is still in violation. And the owner's representative is here.
Okay. Okay, Mrs. Hill?
Good afternoon. I'm Marion Robinson. Um, I do own this property and, um, I'm requesting more time to clean it up.
Okay, how much time? How about if we give you...
It's the maximum that I have.
How about if we do 60 days and then just kind of let us know where you are?
Excellent. That, that will work.
Okay, I'll move for 60 days.
All right, thank you.
Second it?
I'm sorry.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, six zero, motion carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, Tabitha J. Kennedy et al., 123 Myrtle Street. That case has been resolved. Item C, New Big LLC, 516 Austin Street. That property is still in violation.
Is anyone here to speak to, where we at? New Big, New Big LLC? Anyone here to represent New Big LLC? That case is...
Item D, Karen G. and Lauren G. Sassedek et al., 133 Cedar Street. This property is still in violation.
Okay, anyone here to speak on Karen and Lauren Sassedek? Anyone here for Lauren and Karen Sassedek? Consider that matter closed.
Item E, Chan Knott Tran, 317 Lee Street. This property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of 317 Lee Street? Anyone here speaking on behalf of 317 Lee Street? Consider that matter closed.
Item F, Robin M. Bond, 12686 Lorraine Road. This property is still in violation.
That's it?
No, this is, this is not it. This is it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Hey, Jerry, I saw, um, a code out there yesterday and rode through there and I never saw anybody. I don't know if they were in one of the mobile homes or not or what, but, um, what's the status? I know that one day I saw Tara out there talking to the property owners. Are they, did they not find someone to get those mobile homes to move out?
Not yet. The, the one mobile home that was in usable shape was moved off the property. They sold it to somebody. So what's left out there is still in violation. They're in pretty bad shape.
So, like, if, if we, um, close this case today, what's the next step? And the reason I ask is because we... And the reason I ask is because we get now, what I'm looking at seems to be different. It looked like a, a home there. This is right there on Lorraine Road across from Torontos, right, right by Torontos?
This is next to the Colville Grocery.
Yes. So what's, if, if we close this case today, what's the next step?
Then you'd vote on the adjudication next week. And if you vote to pass that, then that would give us the authorization to go hire contractors to go clean the property up and get rid of the mobile homes that are out there.
Okay, all right.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Robin Bond? Anyone here to speak on Robin Bond? Consider that matter closed.
Item G, Angela LaSheria, 263 Nichols Drive, that case has been resolved. Item H, ET Properties LLC, 1891 Pops Ferry Road, lots 134, 135, 140, 148, 157, and 158, this property is still in violation.
I'd like to propose another 30-day extension on this.
Been moved by Mr. Barrett, 30 days, need a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Lawrence, any questions, all in favor? Seven zero, motion carry.
Item I, Matthew Trinkus, 655 Michelle Drive, this property is still in violation.
Is anyone here to speak on Matthew Trinkus? Anyone here to speak on Matthew Trinkus?
Good afternoon. I've been here previously and I requested to have somebody from the code enforcement department inform me of what I needed to do to bring my shed up to compliance with code. And instead of sending somebody out, I had somebody just print out a couple pieces of paper for me. I have a SD card showing where I have made and I'm still continuing to make improvements to the structure to match what I've been given. I've had to tear out the floor, install new floor joists, joist hangers on there. I've had to drill new holes through the supports for the building and install through bolts. The straps that go from the perimeter structure up the two-by-fours, I've been installing those. I still have to do the the rafter ties, the hurricane clips. But I am working on it. I have pictures on this SD card if y'all care to see them. The mess that I have going on in the backyard, because I had to remove all those things from inside the shed, place them elsewhere to be able to do this work. Simply asking for a permit so I can get out of y'all's hair and strictly work with the code enforcement on getting things correct as far as the structure goes.
No permit?
No permit.
Mr. Creel, permit requested?
Prior to the last extension, he came in and asked for a permit for those sheds that are already there. But they don't meet code. Essentially, what Mr. Trinkus does is go around and collect scraps and use that to build these sheds which don't meet the wind requirements. He's right, I did have my building inspector go out and meet with him and give him the information that shows what it would take to make a shed code compliant. But the inspector came back in and said, you know, he'd literally have to tear those down and rebuild them because, you know, the code doesn't take into consideration that you're gonna scab a bunch of ceiling rafters and those kind of things together. A lot of the strength that you get is from having a solid member there. He went out, Bob went out and met with him, went over everything with him. He has not been back in our office to ask for a permit to do it. Had he asked for one, I wouldn't have given him one for those sheds because inspectors have looked at it and there's, realistically, there's no way to bring those sheds up to code. They were all built without permits.
Mr. President, the councils have been gracious to grant at least 60 days to the property owner, Mr. Trinkus. I believe it's time to, to not allow any additional extensions. And if we have to take steps to clean up the property, I think the property owners around Mr. Trinkus's property are, they've been more than patient as well waiting for this to be resolved. Mr. Trinkus, I believe you have a period of time before some action will be taken. So if you can complete something in that interim period, that might benefit you. But I'm not gonna support an extension.
Okay, well, consider that matter closed.
Yes, I did get these materials free from local construction sites. But I didn't use just any old scrap pieces and stick them together and try to make a full-length piece. It wasn't a full-length piece that I needed. I went and got a full-length piece. There are no scabs for the roof. Or, I mean, nobody's taking a look. Nobody's been out there to take a look. And, you know, currently unemployed, so financing things and traveling back and forth to his office is pretty difficult at times. But I am making proper effort to get the building up to code. I've been in construction for over 30 years. And all I want is, you know, to do right, get the permit, and then proceed with following, you know, the proper activities to correct structure to make it correct.
Thank you, Mr. Trinket. We're gonna move on to the routine agenda. Moved by Mr. Lawrence, need a second, second by Dr. Tisdale? Mr. Lawrence?
Good afternoon, council. The MEMA has put the 4.66 million into the Mississippi PA system. Currently, it's in step three of five. We're just waiting on the governor's authorized representative to approve it. That's when it moves into step four or five. That, after that point, it usually takes 10 to 15 days to get to our city accounts. I emailed MEMA this morning and asked them if they would go through with getting that step approved. Not at this time. Once we make our next payment of contractors' payoffs and invoices, they'll advance the next reimbursement. Pretty much approved, we just waiting. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor? Seven zero, motion carry. Dr. Tisdale, you wanna carry this?
Yes, I'd, I'd make a motion that we adjourn in the memory of former councilman William Bill Flutie.
And we all second? Call for a question, all in favor? Seven zero, motion carry.
One final, one final reminder, I need to see Mr. Lawrence and, and Mr. Glavine for the insurance committee business. Thank you.